Hi there, this is Billy Earl and welcome to Lower Shore Politics. Our guest today is Jamad Gould, who is running for Wycomico County Council. We're thrilled to have him here with us today because everybody knows the cycle started and everybody is busy. Jamad, thank you so much for coming by.
Thank you for having me, Billy. It's a pleasure for me to be here.
It's great. Now, let me ask you a question. You're relatively young man and you're taking a big step. You're going into arena that's fairly rough and tumble. What has driven you to do this?
Ooh, good question. It's a lot that's driven me to do this. I am young, I'm a millennial, I'm a black man. And when I look at our county council, look how it's constructed, you don't have a voice for those two groups. And you typically don't have a voice for the people of a lower socioeconomic standings, which I believe there's a lot of people in this county that would fall into that category. So if they're not being properly represented and I have the ability to represent them, why would I not step up? That's always been my thing. I can do it. I prided myself so long since I moved back to the shore from college in 2014. On just being in the background and helping out with different organizations but never being in the forefront, knowing I could do more. So over the last year and a half, I've stepped up, I've done more and I saw this opportunity and I said, that's what I need to be doing.
It is a prime opportunity, isn't it?
Absolutely.
Tell us a little bit about your background.
Okay, so I am born and raised right here on the eastern shore. I was actually just telling my friend earlier, I can trace my lineage far back as about the early 1800s. Is about as far as I can go back and trace my lineage back here to the shore. Been here all my life, went to Parkside High School, went to Bowie State University for college, studied music technology. But there I got involved with school politics. And I kinda fell in love with it a little bit. So I ran for a couple offices, ended up being the president of Student Government Association there. Learned a lot there and then I graduated, I moved back here. A lot of people don't know is I left the job on the table in PG County. At the university, they said, you know, a lot of people knew me, they were like, just apply to this position. I was gonna be in a retention for... And I was just like, I don't want to, I don't want to move back. I came home and I was like, I love it here, I love the shore, I love the people, I love the atmosphere. And I saw so much potential for growth. And I was like, I can be a part of that and why would I not want to help my home out?
There you go.
So I stayed and ever since then, like I said, I've been involved, pre- before then, because I did help out with the Extraordinary League of Gentlemen, which is a nonprofit owned by Jer Michael and Chucky. I helped out with that for a while, for the past eight years since they've been doing it, their bookbag drive, feeding the homeless. And I've come back as much as I can to give my time back. But now that I'm actually here, I devote a lot more time to the community. Writing books or being part of the Lower Shore Progressive Caucus, being part of Phoenix Youth Project, being part of Serge Delmarva. So I'm always involved and trying to stay active in the community to help it out. So I've been around and working for a little while now.
Okay, by the way, for your campaign, how can people get ahold of you either to contribute money or to volunteer for your campaign?
Great question. So there's a lot of ways to get ahold of me. You can always find me on Facebook, Jamad Gould for Wycomico County Council at Large. You can email me, onevoicewicko@gmail.com. And I say "onevoicewicko," "wicko" being short for Wycomico. I use that email because I think that Wycomico County should have one voice and that should be the voice of the people. So that's that whole mantra is that we need to, as service leaders, as politicians, whatever the term that you want to use, the county should have one voice, the voice of the people should be heard above all. And that's what I want to bring back to the forefront, is that the people are being heard, their needs are being met and we're really being service leaders as we are supposed to be. So, onevoicewicko@gmail.com. Anadote/Jamad4Wicko, that's my donation site. It's also, it's linked on my Facebook, so if you go on my Facebook, you can see that link on there as well. And just call me. If you want to get involved, just call me.
What's your number?
My number is 443-366-6795. So I don't mind taking a call pretty much anytime. Try to be a little respectful, a little bit please. If it's 3:00 in the morning, I'm probably sleeping. If I'm not sleeping, I might play something. So it's a little bit of respect and I won't be upset.
Okay, well then here you are headed back to the eastern shore from my old stomping ground, which is Prince George's Canyon. As a matter of fact, my dad was an adjunct professor at Bowie State.
Nice.
And so when I was a kid, I used to go over there into their gym and play hoops while he was teaching his course. So here you are back on the shore. You're looking at the political landscape. Conventional wisdom, as always, says very R, very conservative. A lot of people don't believe that. How do you feel?
Looking at the numbers, it's not true.
Yeah.
Looking at the numbers, Democrats outnumber Republicans in this area. The issue is Democrats start showing up for the polls. And we've seen this nationally. We've seen that trend, especially with the last election where Democrats are just uninterested. And that's the real challenge here. The real challenge is getting Democrats to show up. And we have this whole new wave of younger millennials that are now able to vote. And we have to get them out, get them to the polls. We have to bring back our older Democrats, we have to bring in the middle-aged group. And we need all Democrats to really show up to the polls to really make an impact. Like I said, they outnumber Republicans. It's just a matter of actually voting. And there's still so many people I've found that are unregistered to vote.
Yeah.
And most of them, I've, you know, from what I can tell, most of them are registered as Democrats. So we're just getting even more people registered, but we gotta figure out a way to get them to the polls.
What do you think accounts for this feeling of malaise or apathy on the part of center and then to center-left?
It's probably a combination of things. I would assume the last election has a large amount to do with, a large amount to do with the apathy. Especially with center-left, I mean, losing so much of seats and not realizing how... I think this is more, it's like a disconnect with the progressive left and the center-left. And those that are more towards the actual center of the aisle. And we have to figure out a way for everyone to come together if the left wants to reclaim seats, whether it be on a local level or on a national level. But there has to be some way that we can come together with our, while we're outnumbering Republicans by far, and figure out what we can do for our party and bring our party more unity.
If there's a blessing in what's happened in 2016, I think that most specifically, what it points to is the mobilization of young people.
Absolutely.
Not only millennials, but kids who are actually even younger than that.
Gen Z is definitely involved, yeah.
You know, and they are, they're engaged, they're active, they're not afraid to talk about, you know, positions that have historically been, you know, very unpopular on the shore, like the right for somebody to own an assault rifle. While the older generation, my generation in particular, has not stepped up. They're, we're pulling them screaming and clawing into this election cycle. With, and I constantly hear from them, "Oh, well, I just don't have a dog in this fight, I just don't, there's nobody there for me." What I hope they understand, and I hope that they apply it to somebody like you, is that all politics is local. And most of what happens in their world is a byproduct of what happens here on the ground in Wycomico County.
Definitely.
And so young people like you who have the energy and have the foresight to jump in with both feet, we applaud you because you may be the saving grace of the center-left and Democratic Party. Now, your effort right now, are you concentrating on the ground game to a large degree?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
I think it is the ground game. I think that that may be where the disconnect happens. We get so disillusioned or, I don't even know if that's the right word. We get so focused on fundraising or big events and big donors that we forget that canvassing, knocking on people's doors, sitting down, just having a conversation with people as we're doing now, it's about the most passive of things, can sway people in so many different ways. I know, I have the shirt on.
Yeah.
I work at Purdue corporate office. Typically, you would think that's a staunch Republican area, corporate America, you're thinking that that's more of a right thing. They actually posted an article about me running for county council for our spotlight, for our associate spotlight.
Well, good!
Yeah, absolutely, it was great, thank you.
Yeah.
And since that time, a lot of people who I thought were staunch Republicans or are registered Republicans, they've openly told me this and they're like, "I would vote for you." Just because I know your person, I know that you care. But we've gotten so far away from that, so we have to get back to it. I mean, the Democratic Party was supposed to be the party of the people.
It was.
If you're not engaging with the people on a one-on-one basis, if you're not going out and having these conversations, you're losing the people. It's never, some people are definitely impressed by the glitz and the glam.
Yeah.
But a lot of people will look at you in your heart and say, "What's in there?" before they look at anything else. So you have to be able to engage with people and that's what I'm doing. I'm going old-school grassroots, knocking on every door I can find and talking to everybody I can talk to. Because you never know, you never know what issues you're gonna come up with, you never know what type of person you're gonna meet, you never know what type of voter you're gonna meet that might be like, "I've never voted a day in my life, but you're the guy I want to vote for," or "You're the woman I want to vote for, because you've came and you've spoken to me and I could see that you're a good person and you have my best interest in heart." That's what it's all about.
Well, we're entering difficult times. For instance, if one were to sit down and say, "What is the true nature of the Republican Party today?" That's a more difficult question to answer than I think people give credit for. Because we've entered the age of cult of personality. And we're drawing more and more people into the political world whose resume really is just chalked with whether they're a reality star or whether they've been in the media like this. Which is not really a qualification
Right.
to be a politician. As you are going through your tasks to secure this seat, how much help are you getting from local Dems?
So far, I mean, it's still early, very early in the race, but I've gotten a lot of great feedback from local Democrats. They love the fact that a young person, people are getting involved.
As they should.
And, yeah, absolutely. So I've gotten a lot of great feedback from them. Got a lot of people that, you know, said they want to support. I mean, I just got the donation page up and running. So that's good. So I see that a lot of people are gonna be donating money to that, you know, coming shortly. I see a lot of people that are just, share whatever I post, they want to share it, they want to help get the message out. I've gotten a lot of support from local Democrats and it's been nothing but love and I absolutely love that.
That's terrific. What do you think this 2018 cycle's gonna look like?
Oh, man.
Yeah, that is the $64 question.
Yeah, it is. I think it's going to be surprising. And not just here on a local level, I think it's gonna be surprising nationally. And I say that because of the waves that you have getting involved right now. As you said, the younger people are getting involved, Gen Z are stepping up. So maybe they're talking to some of their parents and their parents are like, "Maybe you're right, you know, you may be young, but you have a point." So maybe they want to swing their vote a little bit more. You see millennials stepping up and running for so many more offices across the nation. You see a wave of women stepping up, progressive women that are saying, "Hey, women are equal, we want these rights too." And I think that's going to shock and amaze so many people that we may not even be ready for. Just because of how shocking it is to see so many Democrats or so many progressive people just come out and say, "I'm running, I want to win, what do I have to do to do it?" And then actually following through with that and getting the job done. You've seen the case in Virginia, last year. Virginia, I would never, in a million years, think of the eastern shore of Virginia as even one seat going blue.
Everything's changing.
Yeah.
It's, as everybody else has noticed, the generation C, the way they're stepping up when it comes to gun control. I think that gun control, and especially as it's practiced here, is a very misconstrued issue. I don't think that most people realize the origin of the Second Amendment. The Second Amendment was a political accommodation that was made from the founding fathers to the state of Virginia. And of course, we know who was running Virginia at the time. Because what they wanted, the quid pro quo that was done there, was they wanted to enact the Second Amendment so that they could arm what were called slave militias. And what, after Bacon's Rebellion, there was a great deal of fear from the oligarchs that poor whites and poor blacks who had more in common than less in common would rise up and would overthrow the system of oligarchy in the United States, especially in the South. So the idea was that we create the Second Amendment with this well-regulated militia language. Because at the time, all of the landowners were forced by law to be a part of the militia. This had nothing to do with self-defense. But it's been turned and it's been manipulated into a philosophy that we see killing our children almost every day. Gun violence is certainly gonna be on the table, but in a county council race, what are the things that are most exciting to you in terms of positions or policies?
Ooh, most exciting to me is...
Well, let me give you an example. CAFOs. CAFOs have been attributed to some of the most horrific of health outcomes.
Absolutely.
And they tend to be built in neighborhoods of color and neighborhoods of poverty.
There's one being built in my community right now.
Yep. There doesn't seem to be much recognition of this, but the point is to find that middle ground between commerce and between residency and between public health, where people can live and prosper and be healthy. But on the other hand, we have jobs.
Absolutely.
So that's kind of the challenge, I think, that most politicians are facing. I'm not sure that our county council as structured right now is really giving it thought in that kind of way. What do you think?
I have actually given that specific issue thought. It was brought to my attention a couple months ago. And I went out canvassing for the Community Healthy Air Act, which is a state initiative where they would conduct a study to determine if these CAFOs are truly detrimental to the health of the public. If that passes, which I believe they're voting on it soon, if they have not voted on it recently. And the study does prove that these things are detrimental. What I believe the solution is to find that medium, that common ground that you were just speaking of, is to regulate the distance CAFOs are from residential communities. If we can figure out if these things are having a greater impact, let's say within, say within 100 yards of where they are, these group of, this group of people is having a greater impact. But as I say, they're 200 yards from here, then it's, you know, miniscule, very small impact. And these are just random figures, it could be further, it could be shorter, the study would have to determine that. But if we can determine that 200 yards is sufficient, then we could say all CAFOs have to be built at minimum of 200 yards away from any residential community.
Yeah.
If we know it's a mile, then you know, same thing. But we have to have those numbers, we have to have those figures and then we can balance out what's gonna be good for the health of the people, but what's gonna be good for us providing more jobs for our people to live here as well. But we have to do the study. The study has to be done because we can't just arbitrarily go in there and say, "These are bad." On the outside looking in, it does appear that way, but there's no analytics to back that up. But I definitely think that putting in a certain distance, a safe distance, what we call a safe zone away from residential community, can lessen that impact if those are indeed having the detrimental effect, especially on kids.
Especially.
Especially on kids, because kids, they don't get to choose where they live.
Lot of asthma.
Yeah, and a lot of asthma, there's a high cancer rate here in the county. I mean, we don't know if these things are exactly connected, but that study would do it. So anybody that's watching this, talk to your state delegate, talk to your state representatives, get them to agree with the Community Healthy Air Act. We need that, we need to do that study. That's mandatory. That's gonna be the start of everything.
Yeah.
As far as the CAFOs go. Other issues I think, I've really gave a lot of thought to would be, where's our, what is the county doing as far as helping out the youth? I know we have our project where the county is reconstructing all the parks. And that's great, I love that idea, because there were a lot of parks that need to be redone, playground equipment. But there can be so much more done. And I look at the city, I look at what they're doing. And this is not the start of, you know, anyway, what the counties can do and what the city can do. But I think these issues go hand in hand. We need to work together in order to help our youth. You know, a lot of people would talk about youth crime. Studies have shown if we give them something to do, they're not out in the streets causing crime.
Yeah, that's right.
Studies have shown that if they're involved in various activities and they're not getting in trouble, it costs us less money. It costs far less to put a child in the after-school program or in these outside activities than it does to put them through the court system. So we're wasting time for their lives, our lives, we're wasting taxpayer money and we're not providing a long-term solution. And we all need to be a part of that because they are the next generation.
Everybody's gotta be a part of it.
Everybody's gotta have a hand in that.
And really, not so much from the money viewpoint, but from the viewpoint of how do we, what kind of world do we create for our children?
Absolutely.
As an example, I had a guest on last week who was responsible in part for a pretty riveting film, The Sign.
I can imagine who the guest is.
Exactly. Dan came in and talked a little bit about the history, Dan O'Hare, who's running for public office to 37B.
Yes, sir.
His position on it was that this sign sends a message.
Absolutely.
And it sent a message 50 years ago, it sends a message now. And it is not a message of inclusion, it is not a message of justice. It is a message of kind of a subliminal message of fear to people of color. It was a riveting film and it was really well-done. I'm hoping that Dan has some more of these, but in terms of the winter sign, have you decided just exactly where you are and what you think would be the right thing to do?
Oh, as a person that's in the film, as well as a member of Serge Delmarva, say enough for racial justice Delmarva, who started the actual petition to take down the sign and an active person that's been arguing in favor of taking down the sign. I think I have that position down pat, but it does. What Dan said is absolutely correct. It sends that message of, "You're not gonna get justice here, why even bother?" What is your point?
Right, we're gonna go through the charade.
Yeah, that's demoralizing. I'm presumed innocent, you know. You're presumed innocent until proven guilty. So you're walking in the courthouse and the first thing you see when you walk up there is a sign that commemorates a Confederate general. A US Army Major, but a Confederate General. He raised in ranking by going to the Confederacy that oversaw the murder of over 10,000 Union soldiers. Now, while I would, you know, I don't want to say that the Union was definitely for, you know, anti-slavery, because there was a lot more to it than that.
It's a complicated issue.
Yeah, but the South was definitely for slavery. They definitely wanted to keep it. It was the underbelly, the foundation of commerce in the South. And he's, this man is fighting to keep African-Americans as slaves.
Yeah.
And you walk into the courthouse expecting justice in an area where most of our, just as in our country statistics show, most of our people that are going into the courthouse that are perceived criminals are probably of African-American descent. But you see this guy, not Frederick Douglass who spoke there.
Not Frederick Douglass.
Not Matthew Williams that was hung there. You see John Winder.
Yeah.
You see the side commemorating him. That's a slap in the face. There's no way around that. That's just a slap in the face.
People that have lived here much longer than I have, their position is that that's exactly what it was intended to do when it was put up. Because it was put up during the civil rights era. And what it was is, here's where we stand. Now, why they would choose a war criminal, why they would choose a traitor, anybody's guess. But, you know, I have family from the South. And I still hear, you know, in their voices, you know, the discussion of states' rights and the lost cause and the noble cause and all that. And it's perplexing how that period of time in our history can be sanitized and so, well, perverted into a different viewpoint. The South is an interesting place. I know Dr. Kirkland Hall has said to me many times that the eastern shore is the land that time forgot. And I think in so many ways, that's true. But now's the time for young people, for middle-aged people and for old farts like me to say, "No, we're just not gonna do it the way that it's been done." I think in a lot of communities, they say, "Well, we've always done it that way."
I think that's key.
Not a good answer.
Yeah.
Not a good answer at all. It belies the reality of growth, of evolution, of progressive thinking. But it's still a fistfight to get it done. I know the county council here has shown absolutely no interest
Absolutely.
in doing this. Even to consider what I think would be the middle ground here would be to say, "Okay, let's pull it from where it is, because it's just clearly inappropriate there." And if you, the sons of the Confederacy, if you want to have a place and maybe it's where he was born, maybe it's a Confederate war museum, maybe it's someplace else, you're free to do that, you know, knock yourself out. But to have it publicly placed here in such a historically inaccurate context, it's a little bit insulting to the rest of us, but especially to the communities of color. Because when they walk by and look at that, they've gotta be thinking, "Yeah, great."
Yeah, "I'm gonna get justice here."
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
"I'm gonna get justice here."
I might as well go down and try to get it at Burger King. Another issue that I think voters on the local level are looking at here is, strictly from the political viewpoint, is the degree to which people who are, let's say, D's, middle and to the left, are engaged in the political process. Now, all of you out there, I encourage you to contact Jamad. And if you'll give the email address, but Facebook would probably be the best, wouldn't it?
Absolutely.
Yeah, Facebook would be the best. This is a time for Americans to stand up. It's a time for us to go door-to-door and talk to our neighbors. And we've entered a period of time where people live and die on the Facebooks. And of course, we've seen what happens to that data. But what I'm saying to you is there is no substitute for going and talking to people, even if it's by telephone, about the issues that are most important to people who live here in Wycomico County. And this is the sort of candidate that if you feel like we need to get change, and I'm gonna throw a phrase at you, "Vote for change." If you believe that, then you have to get out and you have to help. You have to make a donation, you have to make some phone calls, you have to talk to your neighbors, you have to have a house party for Jamad. Stay tuned here on Lower Shore Politics because we'll be announcing a house party for Jamad in the upcoming months to give people a chance to come and meet him, to talk to him one-on-one and to volunteer for some of these activities. But my point, rambling though it may be, is that we have a relatively large group of people here who have not historically been active. How do we get them in?
We have a large group of people here that historically have not been included in the political process here.
Yeah.
That's why they're not active. They see it as, "Why?" As you said earlier, "I don't have a dog in this fight."
Yeah.
And you just point out, I use this phrase all the time, you say, "People are just like, that's how it's been." That is, it's not how it has to be, you know, there's so much we can do to create change. And I think a lot of times people think about creating change on such a national level that they think like, "What does it matter?"
Yeah.
But they don't realize that a local level is gonna have so much more impact on you. And they're just already, they looked at national, like, "Nothing matters, nothing I do matters." And then they look at historically on their local level, like, "They never listen to me." It doesn't have to be that way. I am from, I lived in San Domingo majority of my life. If you don't know where San Domingo is, it's right outside of Sharp Town in Mardella. It is an historic black community founded in 1820. Super old, super historic. Super old, super historic, uh actually have a museum out there that was once a a schoolhouse for uh black people in that community.
Okay.
Um I live there and I live in the reservations. Again, if you don't know where that is, the reservations is a historically black community. Um sometimes referred to as a ghetto area or a high-crime area of of the city. These is where, this is where I'm from. Like, these are the places that I've lived. I've been around these people that have been, that I felt like nothing they do matters. I've been one of those people, so I know where you're coming from. I I say this to all of you out there, I I know where you're coming from, and I won't tell you that it's not true. There's so much we can do, and it's so simple. It's voting, you know, you vote for a candidate. That aligns with what you believe ideology ideology-wise, you know, so. I'm from those areas. I I I'm gonna think like people that are from those areas. Um and not so much as a black-white issue, as a lot of people try to make it out to be, but as a socioeconomic standing. I hear you. I know how you feel, and and there's a way to change it. Uh vote for candidates that are gonna be pushing forward, that that agree that why it has been this way. It doesn't have to be this way anymore. We can create the change, but it has to start on a ground level. It has to start on a local politics level. And it has to start right here in our community, and it has to start by voting.
Well, it seems like the opportunity is here.
Absolutely.
Um as a matter of fact, uh there is a Lower Shore Progressive Caucus meeting coming up. Uh that is a week from today. Yep. Uh that's at the Wycomico uh library downstairs. Um please come by. Um I guarantee you, you're gonna uh gonna learn a thing or two. Because this is a group that is ensconced in policy and in practice. And that's the difference between that group and some of the more historically uh older democratic organizations. Uh these are people who wanna get things done, and they wanna get them done now. Last question. Um you're in the in the open race for the uh Wycomico uh county council.
At large seat, yeah.
Yeah. Um who else filed for this?
So it's two Democrats and two Republicans. Um so we're all going to the general ballot. It's gonna be a dogfight to the end.
Okay.
Um Republicans are Julie Burlington and John Cannon, who was the incumbent. Um the Democrats are Bill McCain and myself, Jamad Gould.
Okay. And this is for one seat or two seats?
Two seats. So it's gonna be two people, you know. Uh it can be one Democrat, one Republican, two Republicans, two Democrats, but that's all on the voters. Bless you.
Okay, go ahead and uh we'll cut that part, but go ahead and and say that again.
So uh it can be one, it's two seats, so it can be one Republican, one Democrat, two Republicans or two Democrats. But it's all gonna depend on the voters and and where they decide to cast their vote. Um it's a huge race, a huge race, you know, covering the whole county is not, is no small feat, but.
No, it's one of the more difficult races.
Yeah, absolutely, but I think my youth is gonna provide me some, a little bit of an advantage there.
Sure.
Because I have I have no problem walking around the entire county. I I've canvassed for multiple uh multiple times before for various events, but. I enjoy walking, and I enjoy talking to people, so canvassing, getting around the county is nothing, no problem for me, and then uh. There's so many, you find out so much just from being able to, and I'm so glad I did this, like. I found out so much just about the community, about the county, about the people that live here, and about myself, you know, it's it's opened up. A new. I'm not gonna say opened up a new, but it's it's reignited a flame in me.
Well, good.
They've reignited a flame, because I've seen so much passion and so much, you know, joy and love for the community that I I live in. That I've called home for these past twenty-seven years. Yes, I'm only twenty-seven, guys. My birthday actually just passed last week.
Yeah, me too.
But I I it's it's reignited a flame in me. It just makes me wanna fight harder. It makes me wanna make sure that everybody is represented, because we need everybody represented. If you keep voting the same way you've always voted, and you're not getting these results, by definition, that's insanity.
Yeah.
That that insanity is repetitive actions expecting a different result. You're not gonna get a different result.
No, you're not.
So I don't believe people in this county are insane for the most part. I believe they have a a good mind, they have good hearts, and. It's time that we, you know, switch things up if we're not happy with what we've been getting. And I think a lot of times, a lot of these communities are getting the short end of the stick, so. I vote for progressive candidate, vote for myself, um I vote for, look at who's also in your district, to see who's who's there running. Do your research.
Yeah.
Figure things out, talk to them. Like I said, I give my phone number out a million times, four four three three six 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 seven nine five. Call me, let's have a conversation. I don't mind. I I actually enjoy conversing with people. Let's go out, let's have a bite for lunch or something.
Yeah.
I'm, I'll I'll go out, let's have a beer, you know, not too many. I do not, I do not approve of drinking and driving, that that's, no.
Off the table.
Off the table, you know, so, but yeah, let's let's do it. Let's let's talk, let's converse, let's get together. Let's learn about each other, and let's learn more about our community, because that's the only way that we're going to be able to move forward, is to talk to each other. Learn each other, learn more about the community, and then make the best-informed decision for the community.
Very good. Well, we are living in times of change, and it's time to vote for change. Okay, this has been Jamad Gould. He is running for the open seat for the Wycomico County Council. Uh this has been Billy Earl on Lower Shore Politics. God bless y'all. Real good.